Taking the time. Members, that's going to take us to item B2. And before we take up the specific item, I will turn to the manager for comments.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. This morning, you will hear a presentation of the Austin Police Oversight's 2024 Annual Report. The report outlines the department's oversight activities and major trends for 2024. I want to acknowledge the effort of the Austin Police Oversight staff as well as its leadership for their work throughout the year. With that, I will turn it over to Director Gail McCant and her team to share the annual report.
Thank you, Manager. Director McCant, whenever you're ready, let us know. And welcome, and thank you all for being here.
I'm Gail McCant, Director, Austin Police Oversight. And in compliance with the Austin Police Oversight Act, we are going to present the annual report, which will outline the activities of the police oversight during calendar year Austin Police provides impartial oversight of the Austin Police Department's policies, practices, and conduct. The goal here is strengthening transparency and accountability and trust within our community. I'd like to take an opportunity to thank the Austin Police Oversight staff for their dedication and professionalism in carrying out the work every day. If you're wondering why we are presenting the 2024 report at the end of 2025, the reason being is that the Austin Internal Affairs Division have 180 days to complete an investigation. In doing so, what you will find is that the Internal Affairs Division, after completing an investigation, that we may not complete an investigation till mid-year. And so it would be June the following year before all complaints are investigated and completed. This information is then provided to our project lead on the annual report, which is the information is subsequently reviewed and then finalized and coordinated with the Austin Communication and Engagement Department and the City Manager's Office. This approach helps us to ensure that the annual report provides all the complete and accurate data. So it's the following year in June when all of the investigations are complete. And so that's why you see that the annual report is being published at the end of the following year. Some of the key trends you will see in this presentation includes a decrease in the number of community members contacting the office compared to 2023. Alongside a significant increase in compliments for officers, which more than doubled, we believe that this indicates improved quality of engagement between officers and community members. You will also notice an increase in both internal complaints and external complaints. It is important to distinguish between internal complaints, external complaints, contacts, and complaints. Contacts are all the contacts we have, all the incoming communications from the community members, and this decreased during 2024. Complaints are allegations of officer misconduct, and this number increased in 2024. Internal complaints are initiated with the Austin Police Department and come to APO from the Internal Affairs Department. External complaints are those complaints received from community members. Most notably, sustained external complaints rose substantially in 2024, from 14 in 2023 to 69 in 2024. A sustained complaint means the investigation found sufficient evidence to support that the act actually constituted misconduct. In assessing why we may be seeing these drivers, these possible trends, we identified several operational factors: enhanced community engagement, the ability for community members to file and affirm anonymous complaints with OPO without a sworn officer being present, full compliance with the Austin Police Oversight following the ratification of the meet-and-confer agreement, no G-file, which provided greater transparency, and just growing public confidence in oversight. These factors taken all together helped explain the shifts reflected in the data. I now want to transition the presentation to our leadership team, who will provide a more detailed overview of each division's work. We have three divisions: the Complaints Division, the Community Engagement Position Division, and the Policy and Research Division. First, you'll hear from Ms. Sarah Peralta, who is our Public Information and Marketing Program Manager, who will present the office' community engagement activities for 2024. She will be followed by Ms. Crystal Kimbrough, our Policy Compliance Consultant, which will present and outline the division's policy and research initiatives. And then finally, Mr. Masters, Kevin Masters, our Deputy Director, who will provide a comprehensive summary of the 2024 activities undertaken by the Complaints Division. Sarah?
Thank you, Gail. My name is Sarah Peralta, and I have the privilege of leading the Austin Police Oversight -- almost said the wrong name -- Austin Police Oversight's Communications and Engagement Team. Before I get started, I wanted to quickly explain the scope of our team's work. From engaging the public online to facilitating conversations, APO's Communications and Community Engagement Team collaborates with internal and external stakeholders to increase transparency and build relationships throughout the community. Now I'm excited to bring you our 2024 highlights. So, per the Austin Police Oversight Act, our office hosts an online central depository for documentation related to police oversight. In 2024, we published 151 documents to our online hub. Those documents include disciplinary memos, recommendations, and lawsuit documents related to police misconduct. All of these documents are available to the public on our website, atxpoliceoversight.org. As you may know, the Austin Police Department's General Orders 117 is a policy to publicly release materials related to critical incidents, like an officer-involved shooting, within the 10-day policy. Those materials may include body camera footage, dash camera footage, radio traffic recordings, and more. As part of that policy, Austin Police Oversight reviews the materials before they go out to the public. In 2024, we reviewed materials for related to seven critical incidents. Building sustainable partnerships throughout the community is a key part of our mission, and we work in partnership with stakeholders to build awareness about our programs and services and build trust with community members. In 2024, we participated in 50 community events, from presenting to boards and commissions to engaging workshops and trainings with various community groups. One of the many events that we host is our Police Oversight Implementation Working Group, which is hosted in alignment with Council Resolution 99. During this meeting, we present complaints data from the last quarter, we answer questions from community members about our complaints process, and we present the latest information about our work. In 2024, we hosted four meetings, a mix of both online and in-person, to make it convenient for community members. All of our meeting materials are posted on our website, atxpoliceoversight.org, in case you couldn't make it to the meeting. Now I'm going to hand this off to Crystal for information about our policy team. Crystal?
Thank you, Sarah. Good morning again, I am Crystal Kimbrough. I serve as the Policy and Research Manager for APO. I'm excited to share what the Policy and Research Division accomplished in 2024. First, I would like to give a quick overview of our division's responsibilities. They include driving policy and training, turning data into insight, strategic research and foresight, and legislative and policy guidance. Sources of our work include APD-initiated policy changes, complaint-generated trends, city manager directives, city council resolutions, community input, and professional advisory In 2024, the Policy and Research Division made 26 recommendations on the following general orders. Some of those included drone policy, hair policy, low-speed interventions, transport-vehicle policies, TASER device guidelines, and tire deflation devices. The Policy Division Manager serves on the Professional Advisory Committee, which makes recommendations to improve APD's academy curriculum. In 2024, we reviewed the course, Interacting with the Deaf and Hard of Hearing. Recommendations made included increased community engagement, use of modern tools for interpretation, expanding active learning opportunities, and focusing on local history within the deaf and hard-of-hearing community. In 2024, the Policy and Research Division published quarterly use-of-force reports, which consolidated data provided by APD's Force View Unit. These reports provide insights into total force incidents, subjects and officers involved, force levels by sector, types of force used, and response techniques applied and resistance Thank you, and I'll turn it over to Kevin Masters, our Deputy Director.
Thank you, Crystal. Good morning, Mayor Watson, council members, Manager Broadnax. My name is Kevin Masters, and I have the privilege of being the Deputy Director at Austin Police Oversight. I will be providing a summary of the complaint data contained in the 2024 Annual Report. Here's a quick overview of the complaint process. Any adult can file a complaint or a compliment concerning an APO officer about the interactions that they had or they witnessed. They can file a complaint or a compliment online, over the phone, in person, or by mail. Community members do not have to provide their contact information, and they can remain anonymous during the entire process. After APO receives a complaint, the complaint is assigned to a complaint specialist, who will conduct a preliminary review. The preliminary review involves a review of the officer's body-worn camera, any car dash camera, any materials provided by the complainant, as well as reviewing all reports completed by the APD officer. After the preliminary review, the complainant is contacted, and we determine how they would like to have their complaint processed. There are three ways in which they can process their complaint. They can elect to have a community concern, which means they just want the police department to know about their incident, they don't want any further contact. They can elect to have a supervisor referral, which means they would like to speak directly to the officer supervisor, and they can request a formal investigation. If they request a formal investigation, the complaint is forwarded to a complaint investigator in our office. The complaint investigator recontacts the complainant, gets additional information, transposes that information into a complaint affidavit, and the complaint is forwarded to the Internal Affairs Division for a formal investigation. We monitor all formal investigations throughout the process for complainants who request a formal investigation and a supervisor referral. At the conclusion of a formal complaint investigation, APO will contact the complainant and inform them of the disposition of their complaint. This slide presents data on the volume of community interactions with Austin Police Oversight, specifically contacts, which reflect the number of individuals who reached out to APO, which include complaints, concerns, or general inquiries, and compliments. These are positive feedbacks received regarding the actions of an officer. In 2023, we received 1,552 total contacts, 99 of which were compliments. 2024, we received 1,052 total contacts, of which 211 were compliments. Tracking compliments alongside complaints helps balance the narrative and provide a fuller picture of community-police interactions. Fewer contacts may indicate a decrease in community awareness or concerns, while a rise in compliments could reflect improved officer conduct or improved community relations. This slide contains information in terms of how complaints are categorized. Formal complaints are categorized in five ways, actually, six ways: A through D pending, as well as supervisor referral, minor policy violation. Class A complaints are the most severe allegations, which may include excessive force, death in custody, egregious officer misconduct, and they can receive discipline of demotion, termination, or 15 days or more suspension time. Category B through D, decrease in their severity. Other investigative classifications include supervisor referral, community concerns, information pending, no classification recorded, which means the case didn't go to APD. The low number of Class AC complaints suggests either fewer serious incidents have occurred or potential underreporting. A notable number of complaints were community concerns and supervisor referral. This is because many people either just want APD to be aware of their experience, and they don't want any further contact, or they want to speak directly to an officer supervisor. External complaints trend to Class D, supervisor referral, and community concerns. This slide distinguishes complaint outcomes. As a reminder, internal complaints are complaints filed by APD personnel, and external complaints are complaints filed by community members. In 2024, there are 841 complaints forwarded to APD compared to 578 in '23, which is a 45% increase. The number of formal complaints investigated decreased by 26%, from 159 to 215. And sustained complaints, external complaints, increased significantly from 14 in '23 to 69 in 2024. Internal complaints increased in 2024 in all categories, a 35% increase on complaints that were initiated, an 80% increase on formal investigations launched, and about a 20% increase in sustained complaints. Comparing internal to external outcomes show variances in how complaints are handled based on their origins. A high number of internal complaints are sustained following the investigation, which may indicate more serious attention is given to internal complaints. Internal APD members are more knowledgeable about what constitutes an actual policy violation. Therefore, we expect there to be a higher number of external complaints that are sustained. This slide focuses on discipline and disciplinary actions taken by APD in response to substantiated complaints. Discipline includes reprimands, suspensions, education-based discipline, and termination. A total of 125 officers received discipline in 2024 compared to 103 in 2023, a 21% increase. Discipline from sustained external complaints were nine in '24 compared to 14 in '23, which is a 35% decrease. Discipline from sustained internal complaints were 116 in 2024 compared to 89 in 2023, which is a 21% increase. In addition to formal discipline, APD also provides training, counseling for officers who commit lower-level general offenses. The number and types of disciplinary actions may provide insight into APD's accountability practices. Most discipline resulted from internal complaints, with fewer instances of formal discipline being assessed with external complaints. And as stated before, APO, we recognize that officers are more likely to receive sustained findings and be disciplined for internal complaints, because the level of the allegation in internal complaints tend to involve more serious offense, and APD members know what constitutes a policy violation. For 2023 to 2024, contacts declined, compliments doubled, external and internal complaints rose, and more officers faced discipline. External complaints trended to the Class D and supervisor referral and community concern categories, while sustained external complaints increased substantially from 2023 to 2024. That completes the complaint division's data.
Thank you for your attention, Mayor and Council. We're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Great. Councilmember Cadre, then followed by Councilmember Lane.
Yeah, I just had a quick question. On one of the first slides, it did mention there's a growing public confidence in the oversight. How is that measured?
The confidence in oversight?
Yeah, the public confidence.
Yeah, just by what we are seeing in terms of the number of complaints being filed, the number of individuals that are coming to our office filing complaints. We're seeing more sustained complaints now. Of course, there is robust oversight from our office. And so this year, in 2024, not in terms of the number of outreach events we conducted, but the robust outreach we are doing to reach community members. And so we are seeing a trend there with the engagement with officers and community members. As you noted, as we've noted, that we saw compliments rise substantially this year for officers. And so with that trend, we are, we see that there is, it appears that there is greater engagement, positive engagement with officers and community members.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cadre. Councilmember Lane, followed by Councilmember Siegel.
I have some questions related to slides 22 and 23. So on community, on page 22, Community Complaints, External, 2024, I see 69 sustained complaints. But on page 23, Discipline Issued for External Complaints, Total Sustained in 2024 is nine. Does that mean that only that 60 of the community complaints did not receive a disciplinary outcome?
No, it's not a one-sum game, so the discipline does not equate to the sustainment. So a complaint can be sustained and disciplined. The best way I can describe it is to say it's not a one-sum game. Every time you see a sustainment, you're not going to necessarily see a discipline action. There could be a sustainment with training or some other type of action. There could be a sustainment on an incident with two episodes of discipline on that one incident. So it's not a one-in, one-out, one-sustained, one-discipline.
Okay, so how should I interpret the 60 sustained community complaints in 2024? The 60, like, there are 69 that were sustained, nine of them, I mean, there's nine disciplinary outcomes. What's going on with the other 60?
I would say either some form of training is being provided or something other than formal discipline. The discipline you receive, you see on this, on the data, is formal discipline, which is termination, suspension, letters of reprimand. There are other forms of training and lower levels of disciplines that's not tracked in what's captured in this discipline. Oral counseling is not a form of formal discipline. Ridden reprimand, while it is a level of discipline, it's not necessarily captured on the formal discipline that's in our reporting, as well as EBD and other trainings that they offer for lower-level violations.
I do see a category for oral reprimand, and I also see a category for education-based discipline. And I'll just flag that I think that with 60 other incidents, that's an important thing to show some breakdown on as far as what's happening. And you've already answered the next question, though, on the internal complaints. How are we having more discipline than the number sustained? Thank you for that. My final question is, when can we expect the 2025 report to be available?
So as I noted earlier, we want to ensure that we provide full and accurate data. So complaints that are being filed late in the year, for example, in December, being that the Internal Affairs Department have 180 days, it could be June of the following year before we get that complete data in terms of investigative data. And so once we receive that data in June, that's when we start to validate the data and comply the data. And so it's normally around the fourth quarter of the following year before we release the next report, just based on the fact that Internal Affairs has that 180 days. So you'll see that those complaints are being, that's being filed, for example, this month. It could be June before they finalize. Even when we publish the 2025 report, there are still, some cases still pending, but we want to get as closely as possible to having complete and accurate data.
Okay, I'd like to flag that perhaps we could try to find a way either to provide some preliminary analysis sooner than a year after it's complete, or we could find a way to look at if there are ways to expedite that transmission of data, because this being such a large area of concern in our community and among council, it is helpful to know sooner which direction we're headed. So I'm just raising those two possibilities, if we can consider.
Thank you, I appreciate that feedback.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Siegel, then Councilmember Duchin.
Thank you, Mayor, and I thank you, Director and team, for all this work. You know, Austin Police Oversight is an essential part of our local government and really helps build trust in law enforcement and our accountability systems. And I want to thank you for all the public engagement you're doing, the commitment to continuous improvement. My team has developed a few questions about the report and the underlying data. And saw some of these now, but if some of these are better to kind of respond offline, happy to do that as well. Just first note is that the QR codes in the presentation don't seem to be working. For example, when you scan the APD Use of Force Analysis link, it says it has been deactivated. So hoping that can be updated.
Yes.
But I guess about the complaint process and kind of the underlying report, I wanted to start with page 19. And, you know, this is like the overview of the complaints process, and, you know, subsection four is the complaint outcome. And so the Austin Police Oversight can object to the disposition or disciplinary action imposed by the police department. I'm wondering if you know, how many times did APO object to an APD disposition in 2024?
We do not have that data in front of us. What I can tell you is that we made approximately 17, I think it is, disciplinary recommendations. The chief aligned with about half of those. And I think three or four of those recommendations, the officer either resigned or retired prior to disciplinary actions being imposed, but we can definitely get that number for you and follow back up.
Okay, thank you, Director. And in terms of the complaint outcome, how often does APO meet with complainants and show them what you've found?
Meet with them and show them?
What you've found?
Well, we are following up with complainants. Once a complaint is filed, there's a continuous conversation in regards to the status of the complaint. That's not normally a face-to-face meeting, but that's a phone call to say, this is where we are. Once the investigation is complete, we are following back up with the complainant via telephone or email, letting them know that the complaint is closed out.
Okay, and do you provide more details, or what kind of?
Provide more details? I'd refer to Kevin in terms of?
Yes, we, we will usually contact them and advise them the disposition of the case. You know, your case was substantiated, which means your allegations were affirmed, or the officer, it was found that no policy violation occurred, and then we're able to answer any questions without talking about the specific details of the investigation. For the specific details of the investigation that's in IAD files, we refer them to Internal Affairs, but we provide as much information as we can on the whys and what's next. We also make sure that we provide all complainants with how they can receive copies of their complete file from IAD, as well as all APO files and body-worn camera.
Okay, thank you very much. And then looking at the next page of the underlying report, the preliminary review section, it summarizes the allegations by type. And the first category, which is, I guess, the largest area of complaint, is no assistance from APD. For this category, do you know how many disciplinary actions resulted versus how many were recommended?
No, we don't have that information. And if, what, it looks like what you're looking at is the one-pager information in terms of the top level of complaints. We don't track, we don't have the ability to data mine in terms of the disposition on those complaints based on the category of the one-pager.
Okay. And by one-page, you mean like a page 20 of the main report? Okay, thanks, sir. Just a few more I wanted to go over today, Mayor. Just a few more I wanted to go over today, Mayor. On page 22 of the main report, this is titled at the top, classify. Looks like there were 88 formal complaint recommendations. Can you provide a breakdown of these? For example, what were the complaints concerning? How many resulted in disciplinary action?
That would be information we would have to collect and get back with you, Councilman.
Thank you. That's fair. Is it explained to complainants that there is no APO investigation if they choose supervisor referral?
We, we do a preliminary review of every complaint. So before we contact a complaintant, we have completed a preliminary review, which includes looking at body worn camera, dash camera, APD systems to determine if we believe a policy violation occurred. So we do a preliminary review on 100% of the complaints that we receive.
But in, in terms of your, your question, Councilman, yes, we are providing that information in terms of there is no formal investigation if community members are selecting to classify their complaints as a community concern. They are the driver of the complaint process. And so we are giving them information, what a supervisor referee is, what a form of complaint is, what a community concern is. And so they are making those determinations in terms of how they want to, their complaint to be processed.
Thank you, Director. Do you know, is that something that they are presented with in writing, or is it more of a verbal explanation?
More of a verbal, that initial contact is more of a verbal conversation with them when they initially talk with the complaint specialist.
Okay. Thank you. And then fast forwarding a little bit to, I guess, page 27. And this is the, the page of the main report that has a chart on discipline issued. Can you provide some examples of sustained complaints? This is kind of following up on Councilmember Lane's question. Sustained complaints that did not result in disciplinary, disciplinary action? Do you have a couple of examples of that?
Sustained complaint that didn't result in a disciplinary action could be a lower level discourtesy, or maybe an officer may have made an inappropriate comment to a complainant, or let's say failed to follow through, where an officer didn't complete his or her report in a timely manner, and it kind of left the complainant hanging, and it was sustained. Those types of findings can be sustained and there not be a formal disciplinary action. It could be a, an oral counseling, or it could be some form of training the officer received, and that doesn't constitute disciplinary action.
Understood. Thank you. And then last question for today. It looks like online, six disciplinary, disciplinary actions have been posted for 2024, but this chart seems to indicate that there were nine actions. Do you know, do you have information about the other three?
I'm sorry, sir. Could you repeat the question?
Yes, sir. So on the APO website, six disciplinary actions for 2024 have been posted, but this chart seems to indicate nine actions. And so it seems like three are not on there? Do you have more information about that?
We will, we'll, we'll definitely check the website and determine where the additional three disciplinary actions are and ensure that they are posted.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Duchin?
Thank you, Mayor. I was hoping you guys could clarify a couple. First of all, thank you for the work you've done here, and, and every indication that I have from reading both reports, presentation of the actual report suggests that things seem to be trending in a healthy direction. So I'm very encouraged by what I'm seeing. A couple of questions I'm hoping you can clarify. One is, it sounds like there are recommendations that are made that are both as a result of the internal and external complaint process, but it sounds like there are also policy recommendations that are made. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Do we have any breakdown? It seems like most of the energy was spent on understanding the breakdown of the complaint recommendations. Do we have any understanding about the extent that APD adopted the policy recommendations that were outlined for things like drones or tasers or things like that?
I know on, I guess the slideshow's not back up, but I have asterisks next to the recommendations that were either partially or fully implemented by APD. Again, we make these recommendations, and whether or not APD accepts them is, you know, their, their choice. So the ones with asterisks were either partially implemented or fully implemented. The rest have not been implemented.
Okay. So if I could, if I interpret that, the asterisks indicate to the extent that something has been partially implemented or fully implemented, the rest of them, I can assume have not been implemented at all.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you for that. I'm also curious about, I think there was a, on the slide, let's see what, this is, I think, slide 22. It looks like we're doing a much better job of investigating the internal complaints between 23 and 24. Looks like in 23, maybe two-thirds of them were investigated, and 24, almost like, what, 96% were investigated. Can you help, is there any explanation you can share that helps account for why we're doing a dramatically better job investigating the internal complaints between year to year?
In the internal complaint investigation, they're submitted internally by APD. The investigations are conducted by APD. While we do a preliminary review, APD would have to answer that question. They're the driver of the activity.
Okay. Now would, now be an appropriate time to ask either Chief Davis or Henderson to help me better understand that?
Sir, can you repeat your question, please?
I was wondering, between 2023 and 2024, it looks like we did a substantially better job investigating our internal complaints, like going up from, call it 60, 65% to close to 100%. So, and they indicated, staff indicated that that was more driven by APD internal policy rather than the work that they've done at OPO. So I'm curious if, if you can help me understand why we seem to have done a much better job investigating our internal complaints?
I think they're supervisory driven, and so it is the supervisor, the frontline supervisor recognizing behaviors that need to be investigated and sending them up the chain to be investigated. And so that's what we're seeing, is a more robust driving, drive from those frontline supervisors.
Okay. Thank you for understanding that. Last question I've got, one of the first slides in there indicates, talks about the possible drivers of why things are trending in a much better direction. Chief Davis, I might use your perspective here also, if you don't mind staying around for one more question. One of the things that's not there, so first of all, one of the things that is there is the idea that we did a much better job outreach, which I'm grateful for also, as others have indicated. But I'd also assume I'd get a different response in the data if we'd done a much, if we'd, my expectation would have been, had we done a, had we enhanced our outreach efforts, I would have actually gotten, I figured out how to get potentially even more complaints or more compliments in, where it seems like we've actually gotten an aggregate decrease in the amount between year to year. One thing that's not on there is any changes that are implemented by APD on there that might have accounted for these changes. So I'm just curious if you feel like all the, all the changes that we're seeing year to year are being driven internally by OPO processes, or there are also things that APD has done to account for why some of the improvements have been reflected in the data you've shared today?
Yeah. I, I will say that in terms of, I, I know we noted that the compliments for officers have increased in our office in compliance with the Oversight Act. We do body worn cam audits, and we really are seeing positive engagement between officers and community members as we are doing those body worn cam audits. And so it's not just that we are getting the compliments that are coming into our office. We also, as we do those off, those audits, we are also seeing that positive engagement with, with officers and community members. And we are following back up with those officers, saying, we've used your body worn cam today, and this is what we saw, that positive engagement between community members and officers. And so I, I, I believe that as we are following back up with officers and talking to them about what we're seeing on, on audits, that we are reinforcing, reinforcing that behavior, that positive behavior between community members and officers.
Chief, is there anything you can add to why you think we've made this kind of improvement year to year?
Yeah, I think it's probably a combination of both. I appreciate the work that Gail does. I respect it. I think there's absolutely, you know, police departments across the country have to have this. So I, I respect the, the whole process, but it is also how we're doing internally as well. And so setting that expectation, and certainly as we move into, you know, looking at 2025, how we're doing that and how we're getting better at it, customer service driven, being customer service driven, all of that is important. So I think it's a combination of, of both.
Are you seeing any kind of data on your end, Chief, in terms of anything you can measure, I don't know, recruitment, morale, anything like that, that this kind of reporting impacts the way that your department or your officers are either running or behaving?
Well, again, I think there's absolute benefit here, and I think as we start looking at, and people feel confident in their, in their police department, and we start getting, you know, when you're looking at the complaints, and I think OPO or APO did a fantastic job of kind of breaking down what those complaints are, and we can start measuring those, how we get better at that as we move forward. So I think certainly, you know, moving into this year and moving into 2026, it is about how our response times are improving, how we're getting on scene, how we're looking at the whole reporting process ourself, and again, being customer service driven as an agency.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your work on that and clarifying that, and thank you all for the presentation. I'm looking forward to the data for next year.
Thanks, Councilmember Duchin, Councilmember Alter, Councilmember Ellis, and Councilmember Vela.
Thank you very much. I was curious if y'all collect any data or how, if at all, you measure the satisfaction of the complainant? Do you have any kind of question at the end, or, you know, are you satisfied with how this resolved?
We, we do not have. I, I know this year there is a plan to really engage community members with, with a survey. We've talked about doing that. In, in terms of, there, there was a, a question earlier in, in terms of our ability to gauge whether or not community members are, are, are pleased with the work that we do. And what we're seeing, as, as we noted, while we, we noted that contacts for community members have decreased, but the number of complaints being filed with our office has increased. And one of the trends that we associate with that is that there's more confidence in the oversight, you know, the oversight office. And so while we don't have any data and just the ability to do some of that, that data minding, as we are seeing the number of complaints being filed in our office, we believe that this is a trend that shows that the, the community is really confident in the, in the oversight, in the oversight office.
And on?
In the services that we provide.
Can you talk a little bit about just what the process looks like that makes this complainant focus, you know, not focused on whether it's the officer or whatever, but, but that this process is really complaining?
Yeah, we, we really do aim to provide procedural justice for community members. And so that's ensuring that we have a complaint process that is really accessible, that's really easy for community members to file complaints. There are a number of ways in which community members can file complaint. We also ensure that anytime we are doing Austin Police Oversight, community events that are sponsored by Austin Community Oversight Office, that we have interpretive services. We ensure that we are having our materials that are printed in multiple languages. One of the things we did in 2024 is that we built out what's called an intake space, and it's a private space, confidential space, not on the same floor as our, as our office, to allow a safe space for community members to come file complaints. I don't know if you are aware, but our office is located on the same floor with Internal Affairs, and so there's always that possibility for community members to run into our office, officer. And so we built out this space in a corner on another, on another floor to ensure that community members know that they have a space that's private and safe, that they can come to and file their complaints, and really not have that opportunity to, to run into officers if they're coming directly to our office. So all of that being complaint centered.
And I'm curious what you think, looking to next year, what you would like to see done better, done differently, just what is kind of on the horizon that you think is a room for growth?
Yeah. I, I think one of the things we, we, I know one of the things we'd like to see, we really would like to have the ability to do a little more data minding, to tell, to tell our story. We do have some very exciting projects coming up for 2026. We're going to revamp our Know Your Rights campaign, enhancing that project. We are scheduled to mid-year do an Officer Involved Shooting Dashboard, so, so communities are, are getting information in real time. In the past, what we've done is we've done an Officer Involved Report for like over a five-year period. We don't think community members should have to wait. We want to give them that information in real time. So those are two of the bigger projects we have planned for, for 2026.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I can't seem to get that turned on.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a quick question, which also pertains to the graph that's shown on page 20, but there is a definition on 29, which is that highest, that highest level of reporting, no assistance from APD. Can you talk me through specifically what different types of no assistance were seen in that area? Sorry, that's not the slide. I'm looking at the report. Sorry, I think we may be working off different documents. So it seems like the top complaint was no assistance from APD. Is that a matter of they called and someone didn't come quickly enough, someone didn't come, or they did show up and they weren't satisfied with the outcome of the interaction? Can you talk me through that?
You need to hit your button. I, I, I'm setting a bad example, and I apologize.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, to your question, what you described is exactly what happened. What this data represents is we have our primary complaint intake person. Whenever we receive a complaint, we look at the nature of the complaint, and, and she identifies what is the top, what are they saying, what are their primary complaints? And you answered your own question. Yes is the answer to that question.
So all three of those situations are being categorized in one?
Correct.
As one, no assistance?
Yes.
Is there a way that we could get a little more breakdown on what is about response time and what is, you know, someone showing up and showing up quickly and then being, you know, having to communicate that maybe that's something that APD can't help with, for instance?
Yeah. And, and we call this, this is really our, what we call the bucket list, because sometimes we get so many complaints. If we try to itemize every complaint we get, we'd need probably 20 pages just for that. We try to identify a bucket that we can put certain types of complaints into. I guess we could, but that would require additional time and space.
I would love if there's a way to dig down a little deeper. I know as you get further outside the city core, you end up with the calls either taking longer, or maybe an officer can't come out until the morning if it's a noise complaint or, you know, some, some issue like that. So I'm very curious about what is, did someone show up versus someone showed up and, and the person who had called 911 just didn't think that they were able to solve the issue they were wanting APD to help them solve, if that makes sense?
It does. It makes sense. We'll, we'll take a look at that and have some conversation around it.
That's great. I would appreciate it. And then I had one other question about page 25, where it talks about internal and external complaints. The external complaints? The external complaints, 841 were forwarded from OPO to the department. And then it says 159 were investigated, which were all 159 that OPO had recommended to be investigated, which is great to hear that if, if the police oversight office is, is making that suggestion, that the police department is taking it seriously. What is in the other bucket of those 841 that did not rise to the level of suggesting APD actually take a look at it?
The, the other bucket consists of the other things that the complainant requested, supervisor referral, community concerns.
Okay. And then OPO just said, we don't think it's necessary to investigate. Can you help me understand that?
No, that the formal investigations, this is complaint driven. So 99.9% of the time, we process a complainant's complaint the way that they ask us to. If they ask us to do a formal investigation, we will make sure that a formal investigation gets done. If they ask for supervisor referral, we will, more often than not, make sure that a supervisor referral gets done. The only time we deviate is if during our preliminary review, we see what may be a more egregious violation occur that we think it should be handled as a formal investigation. We do have occasions where a complainant will call and say, hey, I want a supervisor referral, or I just want the police department to know about this. I don't want to be contacted. And we elevate it to a formal investigation because we believe it needs that. So it's really complaint driven. The 159 that are investigated, it's because they've asked for an investigation and are, during our review, we believed it warranted an investigation. The balance is what they ask for. If they ask for supervisor referral, we forward it to, to APD for supervisor referral. If they ask for a community concern, we forward it to APD as a community concern. The last thing we want to do is have a complainant call us and say, hey, I want the police department to know about this. I just want it to be a concern. I don't want to hear from someone. And then they get a call from the police department. When they specifically told us they didn't want it, we don't want to be in that environment.
I see. Okay. That makes a lot of sense. Thanks for clarifying that. And then at the bottom of that same page, the internal complaints, internally initiated by the police department, can you tell me what types of scenarios where the police department will self-initiate? You looking into it or kind of start a ticket, if you will, to say, there's something that needs to be looked at here? Can you talk me through those scenarios?
Sure, there's a number of ways. One is all critical incident. Whenever there's an officer-involved shooting or death in custody, internal investigation is automatically initiated. Most accidents, which is the largest number of complaints, I don't, I don't think it's actually, but that's the type of thing that would constitute an internal investigation. Or if an officer saw another officer, or supervisor saw an officer do something that he or she thought was inappropriate, that's when, what the chief said, they would refer to Internal Affairs for an investigation. Those are all the internal investigations.
I see. And by accident, you mean crash, like?
Yes.
An interaction with a police vehicle or something like that?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. I appreciate the information.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilmember Ellis. Councilmember Vela?
Thank you, Mayor. Supervisor referral, when someone calls and, and you, you mentioned that a couple of times, what exactly does that mean, a supervisor referral?
That's when, and we explain the turtle situation to the complainant. And when we say, another way we process complaints is if you'd like to speak to the officer's supervisor about your incident, because when a complainant calls us, we don't have the authority to talk to them about the specifics that's on a body worn camera. On some occasions, we don't have the authority to talk to them about the specifics that's in a report. The report may not be approved yet. However, a supervisor can talk to them about all that stuff. So we let them know that if they would like supervisor referral, they can request that. And within certain days, a supervisor is required to contact them to have a conversation. When they request a supervisor referral, we let them know that they'll be contacted by a supervisor. And once the supervisor completes the re, the contact of the complainant, there's a form they have to fill out that goes to Internal Affairs and then comes to us. And we circle back with the complainant. So we do a 360 just to affirm or confirm that they had an opportunity to talk about a supervisor, about their, their complaint, and if they had an opportunity to vet out what needed to be vetted out.
Got it. And so when someone calls in, they're not filing a complaint per se, they kind of, you know, can want to talk to the supervisor of an officer that they had some kind of interaction with?
We still, we still classify it as a formal, as a complaint. Not a formal complaint, but it's still a complaint that's just processed as a supervisor referral.
Got it. It's not investigated if the, if the outcome that the complainant wanted was to just communicate with the supervisor, you're going to put them in touch with the supervisor. Supervisor is required to reach out to that person within a certain number of days. And then they have to circle back to both Internal Affairs and then ultimately to OPO to kind of close the loop and make sure that there was that interaction that actually happened between the complainant and the supervisor. Is that?
That's absolutely correct. But we also, when you say it's not investigated, we are doing a preliminary review of every complaint that is coming to our office.
So even on some of those, you all may say, you know what, that does need to be investigated?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. If we identify that it's egregious, we, we make the decision that this needs to be escalated and should be investigated as a formal complaint.
Okay. Thank you for that. That's very helpful. And, but so, and again, just to clarify for myself and I think for the public, the internal complaints that you have, and this is on your presentation on page 22, internal complaints, those are initiated by APD, either by supervisors or by other officers on the scene or whatever the case may be. Is that correct?
That is correct, sir.
Got it. And then the community complaints, those are not initiated. Those are initiated by folks calling in to your office saying, hey, I had a problem with this, or I had a problem with that, or whatever the case may be.
That is correct.
Is there overlap between the two where, you know, APD is already investigating and, and, you know, and just kind of trying to suss that out? How, how much overlap is there?
I, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but there definitely is overlap where a community member has filed a complaint and the internal affair, the supervisor for an officer has also filed a complaint related to that same allegation. So there is some overlap there.
Got it. And, and then again, going back to the ones where a complainant called and said they did want a formal investigation, I just want to make sure that I understood this, that all of those cases, you referred them to APD for a formal investigation and there was a formal investigation. Was that, is that correct?
That is correct.
Great. So there's no cases where the public is saying, hey, I want y'all to look into this? And, and there was no kind of follow-up, huh?
No, sir.
That's great. That's great. Then I understood, and I heard that, do y'all do random audits of body cam cameras?
That is correct. In compliance with the Austin Police Oversight Act, we do random body worn cam audits. And so the staff is looking at body worn cam. I don't know, I don't have the number in my head in terms of how many body worn cam audits we did.
I think we did around in '24, 1,200 reviews of body worn camera and over 1,000 hours of video.
And are those in relation to specific incidents, like a random selection of incidents? Or you're just pulling a random day and, and reviewing the, the footage just as a precautionary matter?
Not, not related to a specific incident. We're just pulling the data and looking at it randomly.
Got it. And then with regard to the Academy recommendations, I saw that you have, and I know that, that Councilmember Seagull mentioned that the QR code, it's not working on that, but that there were some recommendations with regard to curriculum and/or the Academy. Could you talk about those a little bit? What's going on with that?
I'll defer to Crystal.
Yes, I'd be happy to talk about that. There is, it was part of Kroll recommendations to create a PAC, which is the Professional Advisory Committee at the Academy. And it's made up of sworn and civilian subject matter experts that review courses that we, they're courses that are being taught, BPOC courses. We review the T-COLED material, review the instructor's curriculum, the PowerPoints, all the things that are handed out to the cadets, like supplementary educational tools. And then everyone writes their own recommendations on improvement through the lens, like I would, I write the recommendation through the lens of Austin Police Oversight. And we get back together, discuss it, it's written up and sent to the commander to review and then sign off on, on whether or not they want to implement those changes.
Okay. And, and I'm assuming that's the, the recommendations and the QR code would lead to a document that has the recommendations through the Academy?
Our website has, there's separate documents. You would have to go through the website to see the curriculum recommendations, but they're all on our website.
Okay. Thank you for that. And then just broadly speaking, any trends in particular with the use of force? And I don't know, we were talking about, you know, over the last couple of years. Are y'all, is anything that jumps out with regard to the overall use of force complaints and concerns?
The data that we, well, complaints is different than the use of force report.
Yeah.
I can speak to the reporting and that data we were getting from the Force Review Unit, it didn't get into demographics. It wasn't that detailed. But I would say sector-wise, you know, George Sector was highest in use of force, things like that. There were trends within the report, but there was also data missing.
Okay. Well, I'll follow up on that offline. Finally, you were mentioning that, you know, sometimes maybe someone is not satisfied with the outcome of, of their complaint. Right now, again, with the, the G-file, with the APOA, and then ultimately the full transparency that was included in the police contract, when someone is not satisfied with the report, or honestly, even if they are satisfied with the report, they can request the investigatory materials and they will receive the investigatory materials. Is that, is that correct?
That is correct. I mean, with the, with the G-file, a community member has the ability to request their, their case information via a public information request. Prior to that, you could make the request, but the, the information was not released to the community members. Now that there's no confidential G-file, community members have the ability to make a request per a public information request and receive those, that evidence or that case file information.
Yeah, I just want to emphasize what a positive change that is and what a big change that is. I, I mean, it's one thing to get a, you know, say, oh, it was investigated and we took care of it and we can't tell you anything about it. Like, that just does not instill confidence, the, just the full transparency where people can follow up on their concerns and review the results of the investigation. Whether they're satisfied or not, honestly, with the outcome is just, I think, critically important for instilling a public confidence and improving a public confidence. So again, just wanted to highlight that. Thank you all.
Chief, did you have something you want to say?
Yes, Mayor, I did. In regard to your, your question about the, the data on the use of force. So one of the things, we contracted with Dr. Robin Engel. You guys have heard her presentation on the use of force. One of the things she found is on the website, the use of force was being reported twice. And so that's why it was pulled off of the site, to make sure that that data was correct. And so that's what we found is when we started looking at it, there were some uses of force that were being double counted. And so that's why that was pulled and that will be put back on correctly.
Thank you for the clarification, Chief. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember. All right, members, that'll take us to the, we have one speaker, I think, on this item. So I'm going to ask that the clerk call this speaker.
Yes. The only speaker we have on item B2 is Nellie Paulina Ramirez.
Please come forward.
You will have two minutes.
Thank you for being here and thank you for your patience, but we thought the best way to do this was let all the presentation be made.
Fair enough, fair enough. I did have prepared remarks, but after listening to the presentation, you'll bear with me as I kind of make my way through my notes. My name is Nellie Paulina Ramirez and I am a resident of D5. And I am also Chair of the Public Safety Commission. Many of you should have, all of you should have already received the recommendation that the Public Safety Commission passed with regards to the Office of Police Oversight, which included a request for a complete audit of their complaints process. I think after listening to today's presentation, I just want to have a little sidebar and say that there's been a lot of talk about the increase in compliments for officers and improved, improved, improved results for internal complaints that APD is seeing. And a huge nod to Chief Davis for making these improvements. I don't want us to conflate improvements at APD with satisfaction with the Office of Police Oversight complaint process, because the way those complaints are being handled is distinct. So I wanted to say that. And then just a reminder that sworn officers have a law enforcement division, City Legal, this council, the Austin Police Association and their legal teams supporting them. Complainants only have the Office of Police Oversight. The community wants an OPO that supports and informs complainants every step of the way first. And my hope is that council will push our Office of Police Oversight to better advocate and go to bat for the community that voted for their continued existence as a department. I say this because.
Finish, say because and then we'll be done.
My overall big picture concern is that we have an Office of Police Oversight that has, in the interest of creating a good working relationship with the Austin, Austin Police Department, created an overly deferential process to the Austin Police Department. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Thank you all. We appreciate the presentation. Thank you very much. Members, the next thing we have on our agenda is that we're going to go into an